Good afternoon. It's almost four o'clock. It's 4:03 on Tuesday, June 12th. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Commissioner Duran check.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Chairman Herrick.
Here.
All members coming forth.
Please stand for invocation and the pledge.
Lord God, our heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon asking once again that you will bless this session of the County Commission. Lord, grant to us this day that by your holy inspiration we may think the things that are right and by your merciful guiding accomplish them. Be with this board this day and guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda will be the minutes because I would probably forget again except the amp made sure I didn't forget but noted with yellow and blue on all over it. So the minutes from 5:00, 8:18 and 5:15, 18.
Don't move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And next will be citizen input. If anyone from the audience would like to come and address the public, these citizens, the board, everybody. I see someone coming up. Beautiful. Thank you.
I tried to be patient and see if anyone else. Thank you. I just wanted to, as Director of Environmental Affairs and Community Development for Bay County, I just wanted to share some good news for our area. I did provide a handout to many of you today, and this is from the Office of the Great Lakes, directly from the Governor's office with the State of Michigan, that the US EPA and the Office of the Great Lakes have accepted the beach closings restoration criteria for the Saginaw Bay and the Saginaw River, the area of concern. Many of us know that this area has been designated a special area of concern back from the early 90s through the International Joint Commission, through the governments of Canada and the US. It's administered through the EPA and then it negotiates with the states for cleanup of these special highly impacted, environmentally impacted areas. These beach closings that we've had in the Saginaw Bay and Saginaw River, we've worked very hard to have some improvements. We've worked on having some, the wastewater, the municipal wastewater treatment plants have made substantial improvements in the city of Saginaw and the city of Bay City as well as the county. And the partnership for the Saginaw Bay, which is the designated public advisory council by the governor, has worked to establish this delisting or restoration criteria. Why that's important and why this was finally adopted is because this now begins the process for us to be able to say how clean is clean. We can now start to measure when we can delist and get rid of and our this owner's label that we've had as this environmentally damaged area internationally, and we can start to measure our beach cleanliness, the beach water cleanliness. I will say that the water quality, to remind everybody in the public, is sampled at least once weekly in this area, the Saginaw River and the Saginaw Bay beach areas. And I will say the shoreline areas, as County Executive Jim Barsha likes to remind us, it's the shoreline areas that's sampled. When you're not hearing any news, that means that the water quality is meeting water quality standards for recreational use. That means it's swimmable, it's fishable, you can go out there, jet skis. On occasion, we still have beach closings. We have some new money that we were promised this last week, $100,000, going to Saginaw Valley State University from the Office of the Great Lakes, from EPA, to do some source tracking, to actually find out what's causing this because it could be as incidental as seagulls causing the bacteria spikes that once in a while will cause these beach closings. And we will continue their natural open water systems. We will continue to have an occasional beach closing. However, this source tracking money will begin that process to start to identify those sources so we can make improvements where we can for animal, manure, stockpiling sites, et cetera. And I just wanted to make sure that this was brought to your attention. This is a huge milestone that many people here have worked on for a long, long time, Mr. Barsha in particular, through the legislation and improvements in this, both the state and the federal level.
Mr. Barsha?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Director Ogar for her leadership on this issue. And last week, Joel Stras and Director of Health Department and Laura and I met and discussed the beach closing issue. Of course, this county has, you know, do everything we can to prevent beach closings and hide bacteria counts. But it's great news that we have new revenue available. They're working through our health department in collaboration with Saginaw Valley State University to identify the source of that bacteria, that E. coli, that is giving us a problem. And it seems that when we have a very warm weather, short period of time like we did, 92 degrees, the shallowness of the Saginaw Bay can also spur that eutrophication process more so than in other parts of the Great Lakes. So I think, you know, I just want to thank you, Laura, for your leadership on this. Also, our Director of the Health Department and his great staff on what they're doing, Joel Kukowski as well. And hopefully going forward, we will let people know it's safe to resume using the shoreline. Typically, it's of short duration.
Right.
The last one was 48 hours, so.
Right, right. And to ensure that the different parties involved, because we do have Office of the Great Lakes, which is now at the Department of Natural Resources, we have the Governor's office overseeing this local public advisory council, which I am the vice chair on that, the DEQ, the Beach Group, Shannon Briggs' office, our health department. Because of the entities, I know Jim Barsha, you had mentioned, to make sure that we have a group like a listserv, a local email coordinating mechanism to make sure everybody is being informed of the same information at the same time so that we can make sure that we are doing some very good comprehensive coordination, especially now that there's new money coming in. Everybody needs to be a part of, there's technical expertise on the partnership to do stream and source tracking, plan development for surface water sampling. And so that's a very, we're finally doing some, it's finally moving into a new phase. So thank you.
Well, you've provided great structural organization and secure large resources to be able to deal with this. So hopefully the word will get out to the public. And if we have a beach closing, which is inevitable, and they know it'll be of short duration, and we will, we're being proactive about trying to identify and address the sources and do whatever we can to prevent or reduce the effluent that enters our Great Lakes.
Commissioner Krieger.
So Lord, just the two points. One is for those of us that are in our late 60s remember a time when the Saginaw River never froze. So we've come a long way with water quality with that. And secondly, we now have a state park that understands the importance of the shoreline, and they are now everyday grooming with the equipment that we were able to buy with our beach wellness program, with the groomer and the tractor doing the shoreline daily. So I think that will also help so people understand if they come to our park, we've got a finished product, they're going to be happy with it, they're going to come back. So thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, the grooming is important because I was out there Memorial Day when it wasn't done. It was, so it's good to know that it's being done on a daily basis like most other state parks are. You know, we're able to do it now, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Ann Harris, and I'm reapplying for the library position on the board. I'm coming off the five-year term, and I'd like to continue. During that time, I served as chairman of the board for two years and secretary treasurer and five years representing Bay City on the Mid-Michigan Library Consortium. And so I kept busy, and I'd like to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Mullen, Director of Water and Sewer, and I would like to take a moment, if you would so oblige me, to discuss water rates, if I may.
Yeah, you can say whatever you want.
All right.
All right.
So I have a little handout for everybody. And I understand there's been some confusion, I guess is the best way to put it, in regards to water rates and how the county sets the rates. So I'd like to dispel that at this point. Our rate process for the Department of Water and Sewer starts every year annually with our annual budget, in which we establish our own process and our needs, capital improvements and so on. And that derives a water rate that we bring forward. And with the advent of the Bay Area Water Treatment Plant, there was a creation of a technical advisory committee that represents 14 different communities. And there's a singular representative from each community, of which Bay City and all the other communities are part of. That budget is reviewed with this committee. It is then given to them for 30 days to review said budget and to come back with questions the following month. At that following meeting, we do call for questions. We raise and we recommend and approve the budget, and then that's sent on to the Road Commission Board for the following meeting and the final adoption with the rate resolution and annual budget for us. I would like to add that there is a component of water rates, as depicted in front of you, that our DWS or county were part of the rate, a portion of the rate. There's also a local amount to a rate. The rate as we see it in 2018 is $3.52. That was established last December via our budget, of which $2.81 is the finished water process. And this is per 100 cubic feet, CCF. 281 is up from 274 the previous year, so it was a 7 cent increase on that. That rate is to take the water, the raw water we purchase from the Saginaw Midland Water Consortium, and then we treat the water at the plant, and that's what goes out the door to the communities. That was $2.81. Next, I'd like to drop down to the 61 cent water transmission rate that's there, and that's per CCF as well. That's a new rate for 2018. The communities collectively passed a water, or a water transmission standard last fall unanimously. All 14 communities approved this, in which this is to accumulate assets together to work on the transmission infrastructure as a whole. Excuse me. That used to be a 41 cent rate on average that Bay City would apply to all 13 customers or all 14 customers. That role is now reversed with the creation of the water plant and the county's running of the water plant. So at 61 cents, there is multiple components that build that up to make the 61 cents. However, all 14 communities once again unanimously approve this, just like with the rates. The 10 cent cost sharing agreement is in there as well. And 13 of the 14 communities pay that 10 cents per CCF. It equates to about $250,000 a year that returns to Bay City in the form of a rebate. This is the 13 other communities trying to make them whole from the previous relationship where they had the 41 cents that they were collecting, and now they're paying out collectively back to the system now. So the roles have been reversed, but there is a process that's been set in place at a 10 cent per CCF rebate for them to be made whole, as I mentioned. Outside of that, that is what constitutes what I would consider a wholesale water rate that is established by the Department of Water and Sewer and ultimately the Bay County Road Commission. Local costs, such as operation and maintenance of a system, debt retirement from local bonds, and future capital improvements are all a local entity's prerogative in how they fund their system. And I just want to make that clear to everybody. We have no control over what happens above and beyond that $3.52. I will gladly, every year, if you would like for me to come and explain to this board what the wholesale water rate is, if you would so desire in the future, to just dispel any concerns. But that's what I have, and I don't know if there's further questions on this.
Commissioner Coonan.
The, let me see here. The water transmission, now that's the huge lines that everybody supports.
Correct. With that, the water transmission lines were identified as part of our water transmission standard. It also includes the operation and maintenance of the water towers that are currently in asset allocation at this point. Additionally, it was assuming debt in the communities of Bay City, Co-Collin and Fraser for debt, as well as Essexville for the large line that was just built in the last year. That is paid for out of these monies. So we have assumed the debt from these groups, and we will reimburse them on their debt service, and that goes without being said as well. So Bay City has unfortunately feels that they're unjust or what have you with this rate increase, but we're actually giving them back a reimbursement on the debt. We have assumed the debt as a community of all 14 members.
Now, that is the underwater distribution or water transmission?
Yes, that's included in the 61 cents.
So if a 48-inch line needs to be replaced, everybody's responsible for that?
There's common to all assets that were identified, and if those need to be replaced, there are assets set aside for that or capital. The ownership of the transmission mains themselves maintain in the local jurisdiction. So Bay City itself currently has two large water lines that we might all be familiar with that run out of State Park. You have 32-inch main, and there's a 24-inch main. Even though they run into Bangor Township, those are still owned by Bay City. And if those were to fail, Bay City would pay for that, just to be clear, because they are obtaining the revenue that is generated from those. The Bangor customers that are on that line are Bay City customers. Those folks that live there get a water bill from the city of Bay City, not from DWS.
How much of the 61 cents for water transmission goes back to Bay City?
Of the 61 cents there, it all depends on each year's project.
So does it go back quarterly or?
Well, what happens with the transmission is, let's say on the water tower, they incurred debt of about $2 million on that project. And I'm familiar with the project for obvious reasons. I used to work there. That debt retirement, they will request of the county and the technical advisory committee reimbursement on an annual basis for those monies, and we will pay them. It's already planned in the 61 cents to cover that debt service until that debt retires in 20 years. That is the longest debt that has been incurred.
So that'll come out of the 61?
That comes right off the top into 61.
Now, let's assume that the city has a problem on State Park Drive with a main. And obviously, that's pretty expensive. Do they get any money from this water distribution to fund that?
If it's not listed as one of the capital projects, and there's a technical committee that's been established that identifies what capital projects are included in the transmission standard. Those are outlined, I believe it's 20 projects right off the top of my head. If that is not one of the projects that's listed there, Bay City would be responsible to replace that main. They can ask of the technical advisory committee for reimbursement, and then that would be taken up by the 14 communities.
Well, just out of curiosity, if you had a couple of huge transmission lines, why wouldn't you ask for that to be part of the capital reimbursement?
There was much debate over what parts and parcels of the countywide system would become a transmission. There was originally probably 40 different segments. I'm just using an example of pipe that was reduced down to 20 different segments. Because everybody had, anything that's over 12 inches was considered a transmission, countywide. So river crossings that were owned by Bay City are now assumed by the county on those. Those are assets along with the water towers.
But this State Park Drive is not.
That's correct.
So if you're going to reduce State Park Drive this year or next year, and they're going to replace everything underneath there, then how are they going to pay for that?
That is a meeting that we're preparing to have with Bay City and Bangor Township because that has already been discussed. The project, the road project itself has been delayed for at least a year for this to be talked about. This is an $8 million project for that water.
For the main?
Yeah, and the water services that go, because those are all lead services on State Park Drive.
And that's being addressed right now?
That is between Bangor and Bay City.
And the system?
They would have to request of the technical advisory committee what they desire with this because the root standard comes back to ownership is by Bay City. Those mains have been owned by Bay City. They've received the revenue from those mains over the life cycle, and these goes back to 1889 and 1893, I believe it was. And they have been able to bill whoever's been connected to that for that.
How old are those distribution or transmission lines?
They go back to 1890s, 1893 or 1895. They've been in the ground for a good period of time. But service that was, were connected to it are Bay City customers, and that's where that issue specifically will be addressed one-on-one with those two communities.
Commissioner Krieger.
So that project on State Park Drive is being delayed a year?
Yes. Mr. Lillo and I have discussed it based on the magnitude of that water main. That 32-inch water main is an old steel riveted line that has cement lining on the inside on every joint. The method of construction that was planned is a cold mill in place similar to what was done on Beaver Road a few years back. That results in a lot of vibration that could compromise those riveted joints that are in that pipe. And it is a very shallow amount of cover on that pipe as well. So that is all being considered right now. Bangor Township has requested their engineer develop cost estimates for that water main, and the preliminary numbers are $8 million.
Okay.
How far down is that? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How far down is that?
It's about 36 to 42 inches of cover on that main.
Commissioner Lutz.
Oh, still.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait just a second. Commissioner Lutz.
When we talk about the water towers, so if there's maintenance needs, let's say it needs to be painted, is that coming out of the operation and maintenance system money?
No, it is now coming out of the water transmission budget moving forward. They own and in with those towers, the painting, like Bay City just.
They did the big one.
They did the painting two years ago. That was a $2 million investment, give or take. That debt is being repaid to them on an annual basis. When they have their debt retirement payment, their birthday show proof that they paid, then the DWS will return that money. Same thing with Essexville and Fraser and Co-Collin.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutz.
So Bill, what you're telling us is that any water main that specifically feeds a jurisdiction like, say, Bay City, coming down there, is owned by Bay City because it's not feeding, you know, Bay City, Co-Collin, it's not going out to other entities with it.
If I may re, I'll answer that question. But the transmission mains that you're discussing on State Park Drive are owned by Bay City. They have been the property there, the entity that installed them. And that goes back to when the original water plant was built out on State Park. Those lines, even though they service all the Bangor Township customers up to Wilder, those lines are owned by Bay City, and they collect the revenues on that. Those mains were identified as transmission-eligible mains, as is identified in our transmission standard that was adopted last year by all the communities. The future capital replacement of that is the onus of the owner. There are transmission mains or water quality improvements that have been identified. But when it comes down to it, and I've suggested to Supervisor Rowley to meet with City Manager Muscat on this issue, because this is a very large project in order of magnitude. We have 250 lead services on that project. But right now, as it sits with our water transmission standard, ownership and capital replacement falls on the city of Bay City.
Okay. So under the cost share agreement with Bay City, is that for a specific time or is that for?
That is date certain, and I apologize that I did not get the date certain for you, but it's roughly five to eight years out before that expires.
Go ahead. Mr. Barsha.
Are there any further questions, Mr. Chair? I wanted to thank Bill for coming today to share his expertise and knowledge of the water rate authority and of course how the rates are determined. And we appreciate your explanation there, Bill. At the last meeting last week, we discussed sort of some misinformation in the, in the public arena by some of our media that, again, shifted the water rate increases to the Bay County Board of Commissioners and I suppose myself. Well, we had no input into that decision, but the organizations, including Bay City, did. And that was a recommendation adopted unanimously, correct?
Yes, sir.
On the water rates?
Yes, sir.
So I know last week, the board kind of wanted Corporation Council to explain that in writing to both the Bay County Board as well as the city commissioners and possibly make it available to the media. I want to thank Bill for being interviewed extensively by TV5 today to help get the accurate information on water rates out to all of our residents and customers of the system, simply because especially for city residents, it's a very sensitive issue. The sewer and water combined poses a, you know, a pretty hefty burden on our city residents. So, and Bill knows that, having worked for the city, so.
Yes, sir.
Sure he's had a lot, heard a lot from the citizens. But Bill, thanks for sharing your expertise, both with the media and especially with the board and the audience here at our monthly board meeting. Really appreciate your help.
If I may add, Mr. Executive, this fall, we're going to be conducting, I've talked with our new counting manager, I'd like to be doing a Rates 101 workshop for all newly-elected officials and/or current elected officials that we will host to explain the difference on how these rates are compromised, the methods in which we derive these rates and so on. So I'll keep you in the loop on that one as well.
I think it's nice that you explained that. It's the water authority, you know, and that all these, every person, every township and city has a seat on, at the table.
Right.
And it's, we are not at the table here. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Number one, Sahiron Woods Nursing Center, recognition of five-star status, resolution number 2018-116, sponsored by Commissioner Krieger.
I admit that resolution.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution 2018-116, of the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas Sahiron Woods Nursing Center, a CMS five-star rated facility is a family-owned and operated provider of both short-term rehabilitation and extended care with over 36 years in the long-term care profession. Whereas Sahiron Woods Nursing Center has held a CMS five-star rating for the entire history of the facility. And whereas CMS created the five-star rating system to help consumers, their families and caregivers compare nursing homes more easily and to help identify areas about which there may be questions. Whereas the skilled nursing industry ratings come from health inspections, staffing and quality measures, and nursing homes with five stars are considered to have much above-average quality. Whereas Sahiron Woods Nursing Center, a longstanding staple in our community, partners with local businesses as vendors, fostering exceptional relationships and resulting in a positive impact in our community. Whereas Sahiron Woods Nursing Center, with a dedicated staff, 27 percent of which hold 10-plus or more years of service, has been committed to providing care that focuses on a person-centered approach to care, with the intention of supporting the best possible balance between what is important in each person's life and what is important for the person's continued health and well-being. Whereas daily life at Sahiron Woods Nursing Center is devoted to restoring health, recovering abilities, and rejoicing in life. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive offer their congratulations to Sahiron Woods Nursing Center on continual achieving five-star status and extend best wishes and their efforts five-star status, and extend best wishes in their efforts to provide continued quality care to their patients. Signed, Tom Here, Chair and Board.
Commissioner Krieger, folks from the nursing center, you have to step inside the gate here. Mr. Marcia.
Okay.
Who's in charge of mine? Commissioner Krieger, Marcia, do you present the presentation?
Abby, I really appreciate the email that you sent me to make aware to the community just what you have to offer and how special it is that, you know, having that five-star rating isn't something that just one person did, it's a team effort, and I know that all those people there have to work together to provide the service that you do to help our population, some of us that are getting older, so, congratulations on the rating, and-
Thank you very much.
I appreciate all the communications that you did, and maybe you'd like to introduce your boss?
Hi, everyone, I'm Abby Geyer Spock. This is my boss and administrator of Huron Woods, Sean Coughlin. We are a sixty-bed facility located on M-13 in Caucaul, and I invite anybody out to come and take a look if you or a loved one is needing any help. We provide physical, occupational, and speech therapy, lots of activities, great food, so if you have the time, stop out and take a look, because we, we do love being in the community.
Of course, the boss-
Oh, boy, I got some. Well, I'd like to thank the board here for acknowledging our facility, and thank you, Abby, and Ernie Krieger for this nice honor, and just a reminder that it is owned and operated by the Poplinsky family, and they've been a longtime member of the Bay City area, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. We might have broken smiles.
Big smile. Yes. Amber, you too.
Oh, man.
Tom, could I add a comment?
Moving on.
Tom, I just wanted to have a comment before we leave. I was a neighbor of Arlene and Jack Poplinsky's way back. I was young, and I remember when Arlene first applied for her long-term care facility licensure with the state, and I saw Huron Woods really flourish under the Poplinsky family and your management and the dedicated staff out there, and we have a lot of long-term care facilities, but very few, if ever, attain that five-star status. So that truly is a, that's the platinum rating of long-term care facilities, and we're glad to have you in Bay County and glad to still have the presence of the Poplinsky family, even though they relocated to another part of the state some years ago, but the dedicated staff that they continue to maintain at Huron Woods is greatly appreciated, as the resolution and the commissioner stated, so.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you very much, and we do still have a, a part of the family that still does live here in Bay County, and, and I did want to thank you, and, and it was Boswell that came up with you a few years back when you came to visit us, so thank you for that, too. So, appreciate the honor.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number three, the Department of Aging Information, 2018. Number two, oh, number two's coming in July. You're okay. They're not here, come on. Number two, number two is off today. He's coming back next month. That's why you're on.
Oh, okay, well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, our county executive, Jim. Back when I started in August, I was approached by Commissioner Lutz to make a small little information, information commercial about our department, and we have done just that. It's taken us almost a year, but it's ready to go. I want to show it to you today. But I do want to thank Nick Page from Bay County Television and Jeff Doan, who is going to be our over speaker on this whole thing. It's beautiful. Ignore the lady in the beginning and the end, but other than that, here we go.
Hello, I'm Beth Yurick, Director of Bay County Department on Aging, formerly Bay County Division on Aging. Back in January of 2017, our county executive, Jim Barcia, established us as a standalone department, and our name was then changed to Department on Aging. The video you will be watching is an overview of services Department on Aging provides to Bay County residents sixty years and better. We are dedicated to providing continued opportunities for the sixty-plus population in our community by maintaining independence, offering social opportunities, and enhancing their lives through quality services in a cost-effective manner. Bay County Department on Aging has sixty-five employees providing various programs. We hope you enjoy.
Bay County Department on Aging's main office is located on the second floor of the Bay County building at 515 Center Avenue in Bay City. We are open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and can be reached by phone at area code 989-895-4100, or toll-free at 1-877-229-9960. Housed at this location is our registered nurse and case managers, front office staff, management staff, and director of the program. This is where your calls for services come in, donation letters are sent, and then services begin. The Bay County Department on Aging serves about one-hundred-and-fifty meals Monday through Friday at six different activity centers. Our Meals on Wheels program also provides home-delivered meals to eligible seniors. On average, we produce eight-hundred meals per day that are delivered along ten different routes throughout Bay County. Our activity centers offer a wide range of programs from aging well, health and educational programs, exercise and instructional classes, informational speakers, social activities, and senior support groups. We are always recruiting volunteers to help at activity centers as well as other activities such as commodity deliveries, senior Olympics, day trips, and friendly shoppers or drivers. Our activity centers include the Canteen Activity Center located at 800 Livingston Street in Bay City, the Riverside Activity Center located at 800 John F. Kennedy Drive in Bay City, Hampton AM and PM Activity Center located at 801 West Center Road in Essexville, Caucaul Activity Center located at 1800 East Parish Road in Caucaul, and the Williams Activity Center located at 1080 West Midland Road in Auburn. These activity centers encompass a large portion of Bay County, and you can find serving days, times, and phone numbers in our wonderful Times newsletter. Bay County Department on Aging also offers homemaking services. Light house cleaning is offered every other week for two hours. These services include dusting, vacuuming, sweeping, mopping of both the kitchen and bathroom, laundry, and some shopping, to name a few of our services. We also offer personal care services, including bathing one-time weekly.
Welcome back. As you can see, Bay County Department on Aging offers many different opportunities and services to Bay County residents sixty years and better. If you are over sixty, a Bay County resident, and are interested in any of our services, you can contact us at 895-4100, or toll-free at 1-877-229-9960. We thank you for your time and support.
Hello, I'm Beth Yurick, Director of-
Start again.
See it again.
I'm Cora.
I'm Cora.
I'm Cora, yeah.
I just wanted to ask you real quick, you guys, Division on Aging, you also offer some legal, I mean, you can get people in contact with legal services-
Yes, Thurlashar Legal, yes.
Yeah, because I think that's important. A lot of people don't realize that you do that, and, and along with these other things that you do, but I think that's important. A lot of people that are sixty and older, sometimes they need, might need some help with, with lawyer, some lawyer work, you know, depending on, sometimes it's family stuff, and sometimes it's not, but it's nice to know they can contact you guys and you can put them in touch.
Absolutely. This is just the beginning. What we're going to do now is smaller little videos, like focusing in on those services that we provide, so that we can get out there more in-depth what we do. This is just a little overview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz.
You had mentioned when we met today, we just added that, that from your bill board, you're adding an increase-
Yeah, forty-four, forty-four more intakes a month than we normally get, so we're very impressed with that. It comes down July 1st, and we are looking at two different locations, one either being on M-13 just outside of Caucaul, going to our northernmost folks there, and then one on Wilder, not the digital one, that one's a little above us, but the one on the other side going back over to the east side of Bay City on Independence Bridge. So, yeah, we have plans.
Okay. Commissioner Drenchik.
Excuse me, just a comment. I think it's tomorrow morning, we have a tour with some folks from the Department of Division on Aging. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning?
Aye.
Sandy, I think it's-
With Sandy at Riverside?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's tomorrow, we're touring at Kelly Park.
Oh, yes, yes, you are, yes. That is for our, our Olympic Games, yes. That is for our Olympic Games, yeah.
Part of our Rotary thing, we do the tours and stuff up there, so we're looking forward to-
And everybody's looking forward. I just got back this afternoon, 12:30 was the end of our putt-putt at Bowie 18, and it was very hot, but everybody was asking about that. When do they have to be there, you know, is it rain or shine? And we're like, yep, rain or shine, unless it's, you know, thundering and lightning, but, yeah, rain or shine.
Commissioner, beginning-
Each helps give the other words on Friday at four o'clock at the Community Center.
Yes, at the Community Center, if you're able to be there, please join us, help us give out the medals for gold, silver, and bronze to our Olympians.
Commissioner Lutz.
Also, here, two-year anniversary, through in order of Bay County, we've increased the wheel test.
Yeah, absolutely. Working with Penn County Township and all the other townships up there going, and just explaining what we do and giving our brochures out there and our wonderful times up there, that has really grown. We are getting a lot of folks who didn't know anything about us, and it's, it's been great. We have, are touching all the way into the Standish area, all the way out to Midland, up in that area, so we're very happy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to receive.
Submove.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, item B, Ann Harris, request for reappointment to Bay County Library Board.
Move to receive.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next, Frances DeWise, request for appointment. Make the appointment now. So I entertain a motion to make the appointment for Ann Harris.
Support.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next is Frances DeWise, request for appointment to debate Huron Act, Behavior of Health Authority. This is a July appointment. Motion to receive, it'd be in order?
To move.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next would be Patrick McFarlane, request for appointment to the Bay County Department of Health and Human Services Board. It's another July appointment. Motion to receive.
Support.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Sandy Schutt, a DHHS board member, notification of vacancy on the DHHS board, motion to receive.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. And from the Bay City manager, appointment of Andrew Najinski to Bay County Land Bank Authority replacing Ed Clemens.
Move to receive.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to make the appointment to the Land Bank Authority?
So move.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. And from the Director of Administrative Services, the YouTube channel statistics, motion to receive.
Submove.
Support.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next, we're on to reports, resolutions of committees from the Ways and Means Committee. Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I bring, where do I get back then? Resolution 2018-117, it's the Drain Maintenance Worker Vacancy from the Drain Commissioner. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-118, Jury Management System, and of course, an ISD, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-119, Formal Transfer of Debt from the City of Bay City to the County Reference to Water System Facilities, Corporation Council. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-120, it's a grant process for grants five thousand dollars or less from the Board of Commissioners. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-121, it's a drug testing policy from personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is the Resolution 2018-122, the agreement with covenant to join the random drug and alcohol consortium program from personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-123, updated Bay County Work Rules for Personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-124, the 457 Deferred Compensation to Issuary Policy Renewal from Personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-125, the extension from DNR Program eighty's grant and associate student contract for environmental affairs and community development. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-126, the Partner Agreement with the State of Michigan for Elevation Contour Creation for Environmental Affairs, the GIS. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-127, the Internet of Things, the IoT from school, schools memorandum of understanding from 911 Central Dispatch. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion, Commissioner Cooney.
Chris, did we get an email on some update on that?
Between our last meeting and this meeting, I spoke with the Bay Huron Act ISD, their Deputy Director for Equal to Information Systems Department. We had a long conversation about how to put this together, did the ISP for all the, the school buildings throughout the county. So we have kind of a broad brush strokes laid out of what we want to achieve, starting with one of their buildings where he has kind of total control over, and then build out from there. Again, no, we don't foresee any cost at the Central Dispatch's end. There may be costs incurred on, on the school districts, the school buildings end, you know, not sure what that cost would be, but no cost for us in our-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a second. I'd like to thank Chris also for following on the addressing issue, and that is important, and you understand you've been collaborating with our leaders in Bay City, and would you want to just comment on that and lay your end?
I can briefly, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have a meeting tomorrow with the Bay City Assessor's Office, our, some representatives from our equalization, Jay from JS is attending, to have a discussion with the city as to, I reached out to the Assessor's Office for the city, and they have a process in place, but they don't have an ordinance for addressing. So they have a, they have an actual process that they follow, but there's no actual ordinance, a governing body that lays out addressing, that lays out assignment of roads, all of those issues associated with addressing. So when I, when I spoke with Wade from the City Assessor's Office, he said, "This is great." We, I reached out and spoke with Dana, he said, and they were intrigued and wanted to have a conversation. So tomorrow, we're meeting at Central Dispatch with some of the players to just kind of take a look at, again, in kind of high level, what we would like to achieve, what are the, some of the needs that we would want, we'd need to have in ordinance, and then what are some of the wants we would want, and then from there, kind of open it up to other stakeholders and have some meetings and discussions from different other municipalities and what they would like to see in some sort of an ordinance, and bring it forward to this group for discussion. But it's something that's really, really needed, and the more I talk to other municipalities, like the city and other folks, talk to Bangor Township, there's definitely a need there for something organized and put in place.
Anyone else? Singing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2000, hey, it took too long, 2018-128, the Vehicle Donation to Veterans Ban Program from Administrative Services. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Singing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-129, the Bay Area Community Foundation Grant Award for Recreation and Facilities. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Singing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-130, the Civic Arena in 2018 P-Schedule for Recreation and Facilities. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Singing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-131, Fisher Contracting Company, upon it, the Golf Course Recreation and Facilities. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to refer, on 31.
Okay.
To administration, sorry.
Support.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, was that to refer?
To administration.
Okay. Just, so you're aware, if we, in the contract, it says that we don't do this at this time, and they don't get their permits by August, this is something that won't, we won't be able to do. So it's time-sensitive, on, you know, and I guess as a reminder, they're coming in, they're digging upon, they're paying us anywhere between probably seventy and $100,000 to take soil that they need. I mean, this is a really good opportunity for the golf course, on top of the fact that it's very time-sensitive.
Commissioner Coonan.
I do remember that conversation last week, and I don't know why, if there's a reason, Commissioner Ryder, I could support it, but I don't know any reason to refer it back, that I wouldn't support it.
Mr. Chairman, I have some concerns on the permit process. I have some concerns with safety on process. I was brought up last week about what happens when water levels go down, what it's going to do with the pond. So I have some concerns about that, and I'd like to get them addressed before I vote today.
Well, we had brought, we have a presentation that we could give, starting with financials, because I know that was some of the questions that were asked us. Also, we have photos of where it would be. You know, Fisher Contracting, it would handle the permitting process. They've done it before in the past. They've been successful. They would buy the contract. They'd require to follow all the appropriate rules and get all the appropriate permits. If you're so interested in the presentation, we could, we could give that to you.
Commissioner Coonan.
Now, are they going to dig till they hit water, or are they going to eventually hit water when they dig?
They will hit water when they're digging, yes.
Okay, so will that water not maintain some depth, or how much depth? I mean, I can understand Commissioner Ryder's concerns, and I'm assuming, or I did assume, that you dig, you hit water, water comes up. I mean, are we ever not going to have water?
I mean, we haven't had any concerns. We have other ponds on the property. We haven't had any concerns that I've ever been aware of, ever, that's ever come up. You know, it's not the only pond on the property. We've been able to, not, we've never had any issues with any other ponds. Now, remember, this is out of play. If there ever was a safety issue, we could rope it off, a safety concern. I don't see one, but if there was, we'd, you know, rope it off. It's, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't see where we could, I only see the positives in this proposal.
Commissioner Lutz.
Do we know how big the two ponds are?
The magical depth of irrigation pond is like 10 feet.
And this will be up to six, this new one would be up to 16 feet.
16?
Could be. It depends on how much soil they end up taking, because they, I'm saying that they could take up to 104,000 cubic carat, so.
So it'll be slopes where somebody?
Sloped appropriately.
Slope, so you're not, you don't fall into it? Okay.
Commissioner Ryder.
So do we have the specifications of how far within the dump for water, where that water is before it starts filling in? Do we have any of that information?
I spoke to Mark with the Drain Commission, and it fluctuates anywhere you go. He said the water table for that area is anywhere from 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 feet. He said it's easily, you can easily go by the current ponds that you have and where the water level is at in those ponds.
But we're not going to do any testing to find out? Is that, is that the idea? We're just going to say the other ponds are getting dust? I just, there's, you know, to me, it's kind of like, I want to be secure in the fact that we're going to hit water, that's a, that's a big thing. I want to be secure in the fact that it's fenced, so, you know, two years ago, three years ago, we had an individual doping, his wife was staying at the facility, he fell in a ditch. They found him an hour and a half later, okay? I know it's awful, probably. There's people that walk that close up. I have a concern for safety, and I want to make sure that those concerns are addressed before I would vote, yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Well, there's no fence around any of the ponds. And to me, it's in an area that is not a golf course. It's in an area that is away from the golf course. We're going to make some money. The money will be used for the golf course. And we've all had discussions on, does a golf course make money? Oh, here's 100, $80,000 to $100,000 that we could use for the golf course. You know, I would, I do understand your concerns, but you could say that about any of the ponds out there. Somebody could walk in and fall into the pond. You don't, you wouldn't fall into the pond. You'd have to walk into the pond the way that some of them are, so. I don't, you know, I know it's time-sensitive. I think it's a good thing personally. I haven't heard anything from anybody, one way or another, and if we did, you know, the people that use the golf course, if they don't like something, they usually storm in here and let us know. So, I don't know. I think if it's time-sensitive, I can support it.
You know, I agree. I've never, I've golfed. I golf enough, but I've never seen anybody fall in a pond, and I'm very familiar with Fisher Contracting. They have the Ed Buck's Run. That's a pond they got there. It's about eight feet from the lip to the water, you know, so I've, I've never heard of anybody falling in there either. It's just, it's unlikely to happen. And I do believe that, that your assessment of the water table is probably pretty good, because it's, it's always wet out there.
Whenever we're going, I think we probably vote on the referral, right?
That's, that's what we're going to do first. Do you want, Rochelle, you want to talk about, you want to hear about the financials first? She's got that, too.
Well, I don't think that has anything to do with the pond, does it?
Okay. Commissioner Durantchak.
I just had one comment. The reason that I supported the referral, one of the reasons was the funds, the money. I'd like to see that money used to pay back the $80,000-plus dollars that's already.
Yes.
In the presentation that Rochelle was going to give, it was going to talk about how we're going to ask for a budget adjustment in July and pay that back. It has always been the plan to pay that back as soon as we had enough to actually do so, and it's in the presentation for you guys to see. That next month, you'll see that budget adjustment. Again, she can speak to that, but it's in the presentation that we will have that paid back.
And where's the budget adjustment coming from?
Golf course.
From the golf course to the general.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that, all right.
And then at that point, the golf course will not owe any money to the, to the general fund. Now, will this happen again? Sure, right? But as of July, when this budget adjustment happens, we will not owe the general fund any money. So before the project actually starts in August, which it needs to start in August for them to get what they need, that'll already have taken place.
In that case, you may want to amend this resolution, because the whereas before the first resolve says it's supposed to be designated for capital outlay line item in the golf course fund. So you may want to substitute in there that the general fund gets paid back first.
Sub move. I'll support that.
And just to know the comment, a lot of these questions wouldn't come if you had given us a presentation a month ago. You know, because, you know, do we have the answer? Do we have to put a fence around it? If there's no water in it, you're going to be cut with it again, so.
We got the proposal the day before the Ways and Means Agenda was due, and it was time-sensitive at that point, so came to you as soon as we got it, as soon as we got anything in writing.
But do you say that we have a lot of questions? It should have been answered before this time-sensitive issue came about. I mean, that's, I'm just saying, Rochelle, as I've talked, we'd like to get all the information at once, if they can.
Mr. President.
I think they're all legitimate questions, and I know it was time-sensitive. It was an opportunity that I think the golf course could take advantage of to get some additional money to replace equipment when needed. And I know Dan and Jeremy were contacted by Fisher Contracting, and as the chairman mentioned, Fisher Contracting, I think, owns about four or five premier golf courses, one of which is Buck's Run and Mount Pleasant. My understanding, they would be responsible for the landscaping, will help with the drainage on three of the holes, but would also, because I know that my brother and I have a 22-foot-deep pond on our hunting property in Standish Township, and that's always full. But that doesn't mean, you know, you hit a cold spring in the bottom and it keeps it full. I'm not certain if that's the case at the golf course, but hopefully, hopefully it is. Dan, you might want to expand on that. But the firm itself is very familiar with golf courses, landscaping ponds, and also providing the tiling to provide drainage to three of the holes. I understand that frequently pool water after a rainstorm.
That's correct.
So I don't know if you'd want to expand on that, Dan, in terms of, but I think they're about as good as a firm as we can get to actually do the work, because they have significant experience at that, at what's happening, so.
As far as safety of the pond goes, sorry.
Go ahead. Did you want to say something?
As far as safety of the pond goes, everything will be up to code. Per the contract that we have with Fisher, it would be one foot down for every four foot out. So a very small slope until it gets to a specific amount of depth before they go, before they go deeper. One foot grade for every four feet out.
Mr. Redmond.
Could we get this information in the writings, so we can?
I think that's part of the, is that part of the contract, isn't it?
And if that plan is, if it was a little bit bigger, it may have some detail on the slope and things like that, but the way it was sent, even though I printed on aluminum at 17, it's hard to read. That way, we got all the information we can make out.
So. So let's, let's do this. We have, we'll have to go on the motion to refer, and then, and then we'll talk about it. If you want to add an amendment to the resolution, or if it, if it doesn't get referred, if you want to add an amendment to get the money, that the money's paid back before it started, we can do that. But first, let's do the, let's vote on the motion to refer. Let's do a roll call on that, please.
Coonan?
No.
No?
No.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
No.
Durantchak?
Yes.
Krieger?
No.
Big Eck?
No.
And Eric?
No.
Two yays, five nays.
Okay. Now, we're on to the resolution. Well, what's your pleasure?
Sub move.
Support. Do you want to amend it so that the loan gets paid off?
Under discussion, we can do that.
Discussion.
Okay. Being that I made the motion, that $80,000, we'll probably pay off the $80,000 before that, we ever get a penny of that, but let's just put that in there, that if for some reason we don't do a budget adjustment in July, that any money, or that $80,000 incurred goes back to the general fund to pay off the debt, the loan. And then, what else, Bob?
Well, you could just change the, the last whereas, the refund received from this project would be put, would be designated for the loan to the general fund repatriation.
If there's any debt. There might not be, there may not be any debt by that. Well, no, 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 no. What I'm saying is, if they don't make the budget adjustment in July, then that'll go into play. But if the budget adjustment in July from the golf course, they transfer that $80,000 for the debt, there will be no debt. So what?
All I suggest, you put it in this resolution.
I'm with you. We'll do that, just in case.
So we need to amend the resolution to say if there, if there's any debt after July, that the funds from the, the funds from the project will go to pay off any debt that the golf course would owe the general fund.
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
Any of the current outstanding debt?
Any of the current outstanding debt.
Current outstanding.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
If they occur any in future, I don't want that. Current.
Yeah, so if it's paid off in July, that the money goes back to the capital outlay for the golf course. You just said a lot.
But, but let's keep it in there, because at the end of the year, at the end of the 2018, they may lose money, and then we'll use that money to, is that what you're thinking, Bob?
Whatever's over above the $80,200, stay in the golf course.
It'll stay in the golf course.
Yeah. All right.
We good? Does that all make sense? Does that make sense to our, our council there? Man of Quirk, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
All right. So now we got it. We're going to, let's, let's roll call on this one, too. We'll just make sure we got it.
Prattner?
Did he say me?
Ryder?
No.
Lutz?
Yes.
Durantchak?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Six yays, one nay.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Remember where you are.
2018. I bring Resolution 2018-132, the Temporary Leaseman Waiver for First
Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-133, The Acceptance of the DEQ Grant Funds for Surface Water Quality Monitoring from the Health Department. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Commissioner Lutz.
I just have one, one question for administration. When Merle was up there, he talked about, I know, now, have this received for this purpose?
It was announced Monday from the office of the Department, and it's going to be provided to the SDRS for this.
So that would be in addition to...
In addition to the funds, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. That was easy.
That was easy, too.
Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Any more, I'm at. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-134, The Acceptance to the Bay Area Community Foundation Grant Award for Community Health Assessment from the Health Department. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-135, The Agreement for Use of Riverside Parking Lot for the Fourth of July Festival from the Department of Aging. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-136, The Senior Service Employment Program Works Side Agreement from the Department of Aging. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-137, It's Payables from the General and Center of Returns. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-137, It's Payables from the General and Center of Returns. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2018-138, Renewal of Contracts to Provide Bay Metro Support and Services from the ISD. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have from the Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. From Personnel and Human Services, Commissioner Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2018-139, Independent Contractor Agreement with Cherry Kaufman for the Health Department. I would move that forward.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.